Oh, I went by what the I M L. Basically, things says. So it needs to be the what?
It's statues says establish your duty.
Okay.
Your duty to take it straight out of statues.
Okay, Illinois State Statute.
Remember the name of the road?
Thank you.
No. Yes, certainly, it was revised, it probably makes sense now. That will make sense.
I don't know what it does.
No, dude.
Yeah, one more asking. Yeah, one more asking, Doc, he's sitting right here.
They're just in October, how they always pass out the candy first of all.
Yeah, you would bring it up if you can.
Very much. Jessica.
Five minutes. Well, yeah, we had to talk about the general idea a little bit, but I had to take the details. A long way to go. Everybody's on the committee for that matter.
Yeah, it's just me and Jim, so there's no way that. They cover a lot of stuff like that.
Six thirty? Yeah.
People are busy in this over there.
Okay, I'll call to order, please. The Lebanon City Council Committee meeting for July twenty first, twenty twenty five. Roll call. Delphi.
There.
Farrell here, Cornish. Smith. Marcinkowski.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Reddick. And Washington.
Here.
Okay, just your roll call. Audience participation. There's a five minute rule, if you have anything to say, please come up to the gate, state your name, and I will start the plan.
Yeah, now, um, been debating saying so for a little while, haven't had a chance to fully write this out, so hopefully it won't be. It'll be adequately succinct. I've talked about a bunch of cultural resources which have background in, but my academic background is actually geomorphology, which is landforms and drainage and that sort of stuff. And I worked with a resident on the Kendry Park about the flooding situation there several years ago. Um, I'm there and on Roger Drive. He had offered to allow the city to put a detention pond on his property before he gave up and and in disgust because the city wasn't doing anything and moved away several years ago. While a downstream detention pond won't improve things like flooding garages on Rogers and such, increasing the ability to store water upstream, and as Cody implied, limiting impervious surfaces in the area uh, would be helpful. Um, a study by the civil engineer specializing in surface water would would be able to give you the specific numbers and cubic feet of storage and all of those nitty gritty details on that. Um, with regard to the flats. Need to remember, uh, everyone, that that area is the floodplain of Little Silver Creek. Um, from a geologic perspective, it's supposed to flood. Floodplains flood, um, during their their purpose from a natural resources geology perspective is to detain water, allow it to spread, and slowly soak in. When you put levees too close and that sort of thing, it increases the amount of water downstream, causing more flooding and faster water, more erosion downstream. Um, so the issue there is working with the natural situation um, and and limiting the amount of impervious surfaces and various um, facilities and such where flooding is a problem. Um, in addition to limiting impervious surfaces and also um, clearing the storm drains and such so that water can move off. But just remembering that it's flat, there's the water is going to move slowly and sit there. Um, so that's that's it for now.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. To George, I just want to mention what I mentioned to you.
Hi.
Earlier.
Yeah.
So the rest of the council. Very well. Saturday evening, sometimes during the night, I don't know what time it was, I heard a noise outside, I thought a car hit something. Yeah, all the excessive mounds of dirt around both my front yard and my side yard, which is an extreme, there's no way all that dirt's going to disappear unless it may end up in Silver Creek eventually. The way it keeps raining, but uh, a vehicle apparently, but somebody did hit it, I can see the tire tracks. Well, there was a car parked laying out there on the street Sunday morning. So I just wanted to, and you can see the tire track. You don't believe me, you can come by and look at it, it's still laying there, should be tire mark, it's fading away with all the rain, but um, there's no reason for having that much dirt piled up in an area like that, it could have been taken down to the the site where they staged everything, there's dirt down there, dirt piled there. And we continue to have issues with drains blocking, but they're getting worked on. The contractor's not doing the work, like he should be. Um, there still needs to be some uh, either a tube that's made to lay in a ditch to slow some water and some of the mud down from ending up in the ditch, and also some bales of straw would help. But uh, waiting till this, I know I keep hearing this fall. Um, with all the rain we've had, the grass would have been up and growing by now.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else? Hey, older person comments? Questions? Bring something up.
Linda's got something.
Yes, Linda?
Go ahead.
All right. It's it's on the agenda tonight, but I just want to say that we really need to discuss the water issue and what we can do about it. We don't have a fund available through just wishing it was there. And we've got to talk like that, so we put something on the agenda tonight to allow us to discuss it. Um, but we need to keep on some topics and make them almost weekly. And with result, with not just talking about the problem, but talking about solutions with rather than the problem itself.
Okay, oh, well, I'll just put it out there, plain and simple, we don't have money to fix a lot of these problems. We got seven inches of rain last week, then we got like five or six this past week and all that good stuff. Welcome to Lebanon, I hate to say it, some areas are going to get more flooded than others, am I saying it sucks to be, yeah, it does. But we have no money to fix a lot of these things, you got to have money to fix the problems. I'll just be the plain block one, because that's who I am, I'm not going to say, yep, we're going to get a grant, we're going to fix that road, we're going to fix this, we're going to fix that, because we're not going to do it. But we're not going to do it, we'll all be dead in here before any of that happens, plain and simple. You can hate me all you want, Facebookers, that's fine, come find me, six two one North Bun Road, got a big black dog out in the front yard. I'll tell it to your face, we don't have the money to fix it, it sucks, it really does. It's the truth, though, I know a lot of people would love, I would love to fix everything around here, but we can't. We can bring it up, like you just said, all the time, we can bring it up, bring it up, bring it up, but until we as the city actually get funds to go do stuff, fix stuff, you're wasting your breath, and I'm wasting my breath. Wish we could do something, but someone come tell me the alternative. It costs money to get an engineer, it costs money to put a retention pond in, to fix a retention pond, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Yes.
So we have to live in one of those houses that are affected, we just are S L?
This is not your time to talk, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you can't, we don't recognize you anymore.
Like, like I was saying, I would love to fix everybody, it's it's a shame that it happens to a lot of people more than others, wherever your house and individually is. I don't know what to tell you, other, I don't have invisible money to give this person, this person, this person. But it's the truth.
I will be proposing a solution, solution tonight, that is allowing, I want.
What, what solution?
We, we have a disaster business recovery program?
No.
Um. Well, it doesn't just cover water, it covers if there was a
fire or
whatever, where people can go. Kind of like right now, if if somebody is facing deep water, they got to get out. I don't know where we could put them, except that maybe once the library's gone, okay? You could use that as a meeting point, if somebody get flooded out, they got to go someplace. And maybe, and maybe someday, we can do a disaster recovery program. I'm surprised we have that.
That's part of what the safety committee's working on with the, first of all, they've been working on the cooling centers and uh, other areas, but that'll be part of that whole process. Nothing can be solved overnight. And there are ways to get funds, and I'll be discussing that later when we get to that part of the meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Um, on the corner of fourth and Cherry Avenue, um, the weeds, I mean, you you can't even see cars coming, the weeds are so high, and now the residents are complaining about snakes coming out. And this is in a residential area across from an apartment where children live. And I know we said we send letters out, but how long do we wait for a response? Before the city cuts it and send it on the bill?
Well, that's all laid out, and the ordinances and the statute. And I'm not sure, I think it's ten days.
Well, it's been longer than ten days.
Well, depends when the letter goes out.
Well, we need to, I need to find out that, and maybe um, we can get that cut down, because we can't have snakes in a residential area like.
There are two, there are two individuals that we discussed this with, and that's our the code enforcement officer, Blake. Well, this one person, because he's the person who starts the process with the letters and and leads up to the fines and court. And with Cody, if it's city property, then the city can take care of it, if it's not on city property.
Can't do them.
They can't do anything unless they have a court order or the honor for themselves.
Well, we need to try to move on now, it's, I mean, it's slow pace. Something has to.
There, you're talking, do you know if it is private property?
It's private.
Is it private?
And we've had problems with this only before.
Yeah, all we can do is, where our hands are tied.
That's, I mean, you know, we keep saying our hands are tied, but when we we go to other cities that have the same problems, they seem to be able to get the knots out.
I don't know what the deal is with other cities, because unless they've got something secret, we don't know. If there another city that is a non-home rural city, they can have ordinances that are a little more powerful than what we can do as a two or third homerood cities, they can do a lot more than we can as a non-homerood city.
And something else I wanted to say, um, this past Saturday, which we had um, the community organized a three on three basketball game down at Cherry Street Park. And it was wonderful. There was no arguing, there was no fighting, um. There was no police presence. And there was no need for them. And um, the only problem that I could see is, as Alderman I need to get in touch with the park board because they could not use the restroom. And I know they've had a problem with the restrooms, but when they have something planned like this, they should be able to use it and then lock them off after that.
That's something that you can go, because it's your, in your.
That's what I said, I will go.
Okay, so then we on the first
Wednesday.
First Wednesday of the month.
Okay, thanks.
In the park, talking to all their department. And they will listen, they'll do that, they they would be happy to do that, I'm willing to bet.
Because they've even planned, well, they had a a fish fry out at Hornet Park last month. Now they're planning on having one at Cherry Street, but um, I think it would be nice, it would get you guys the rest of.
Well, McAllister Johnson Park is, that's the official name. Needs, they 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 need, the park board needs to know when there's an activity done, there's probably going to attract a lot of, if they're not informed, they don't know, so.
They said they called three times and nobody returned their call.
The calls are going to the park superintendent, certain supervisor. I know who he is, I'll ask you.
So, um, I don't know when they plan the fish fry, but um, if you give me his name and number, I can give, I'll just.
Okay, I'll get the information. And the other older person. Hey. Moving on to the agenda, finance committee.
Yeah, we uh, can have a little discussion here about uh, accepting bids for uh, our banking relationship, I had a couple of brief conversations about that, just to put a lot more into it, so I want
So I typed out something, I'll read it for you guys, and then I'll answer any questions you guys have. Um, so this is for informational purposes and to welcome your feedback as I explore the banking relationship we currently have and send out what is called a request for proposal. This is similar to what our bid process is, but it is not the same because we are not mandated to take the highest interest rate um, or anything like that, whereas a bid process, we would be mandated to take, it would have set parameters. We want to maintain the flexibility to evaluate all the details of our banking relationship and determine what we believe to be best for the city. I handed out a copy of the request for proposal to you all tonight to review over the next couple of days and let me know if you have any feedback or questions. One thing that I will mention is that I'm happy to talk through some details of this one on one with any of you, but I will only share specific details on open public floor because of security purposes. Just as you don't leave your front door unlocked or post on social media when you're going out of town, we don't want to expose the city where their weaknesses are. At the top of the third page, you will see a table that outlines our target dates for this process. I would also like to mention that this does not mean that we are switching banks, despite what some of the rumors are and what I've already been attacked from people on saying. This is just simply requesting information to make sure that we are earning the best interest rates that we can while also making sure we have the most up to date information um, processes to protect against fraudulent activity and to help our city run as efficiently as possible. We have not shopped this around in ten years, just over ten years. This document will be made available to banks next Monday, and it is imperative that we follow this process outlined in this document. If you have a bank that you suggest that we will send this out to or feel like there's any information missing from the document, please let me know by the end of the week. Again, these copies are for you only, and the main reason that we're doing that is for those of you that were on council. Um, in the previous term, you probably remember that back in like January, the the end of last year, that there were some banks that came and spoke and kind of talked about interest and positive pay and gave you guys some information. That all kind of got derailed because we were told that the process wasn't followed correctly, and one of the things that is most important is that every bank has the same information, and so it is outlined here. You will see that there's a process outlined, that if they have additional questions, they will email those to me. And when I respond to those questions, I have to respond to all banks that have given us a letter of intent that they plan to submit a proposal. Um, so it's very important that we keep this information and make sure that all banks get the information to be able to give us an accurate proposal. Um, again, like I said, this does not mean that we're switching banks, it is simply that we're looking to see if we're getting competitive interest rates. And then also fraud is a huge thing right now, that we want to make sure that we have the best resources and that we're attacking that in every way possible. So with that, like I said, I didn't email it out because I didn't want it there to be an electronic copy out on purpose, I gave it to you guys, I know last minute here, I did because I'm expecting any feedback by the end of the week, starting next Monday. Um, this will be distributed to the local banks uh, that are here in London, and then any bank within, if you read the document, any bank within a ten mile radius will be able to request the information and put together a proposal if they want to.
Um, Ms. Jessica?
Yes.
Uh, my question is, do you uh, email just handful of, if you know all the board?
For this, for the gathering of this information? I have not, the only person I have spoken to is the chairman of finance, Mike. Um, I talked to him about gathering this information, um, and that we were going to, we kind of spoke and talked about shopping it out. Ultimately, though, when I talked to the attorney and um, we looked through the um, I M L handbook and things like that, the treasurer's the one that's held responsible for these interest rates and making sure that we are getting the best money for the best thing for a buck, for lack of an expression. Um, and so the, I didn't have to have like a pre-approval on any of this, and that's why I'm giving it to you now, and I want to keep you guys in the loop. But I, like I said, I didn't want to get out too, have too much information in advance and cause a panic like we did last time.
And so does this go in the paper, or you're going to send it in the mail to?
So I mess, I talked to the attorney, there's nothing that mandates that we have to advertise in the paper, I personally think that it's working backwards to pay to advertise it in the paper. Um, so I was going to make sure that each of our local banks in London get a copy of it. Um, the few banks that expressed interest, last time I know, um, F C B has expressed interest. Um, and there was one other one that I know expressed, I was going to make sure that they, they've been reaching out to us and asking when we're doing this, and so I'm going to give them a copy. But otherwise, any bank, it, the public meetings, if you guys have a banking relationship with somebody that you think would be interested, any bank that's within ten miles can request the information starting Monday.
That's just good. Are you gonna start reviewing this yearly annually or just, just, I mean, what are we doing, why are we doing it right now?
So, couple of things that happened that triggered this, um, was some. Looking into the fraud and the protection that we have on all angles is one thing, another thing is the interest rates, um. To be frank, our interest rates right now are not competitive, I, that's, I am gonna be very honest on that and I'm wanting to get them to a point of being competitive. Um, I am the new treasurer effective May, and so I had looked at all this before and so. I, I do feel like we hasn't been done in years. Uh, if you read in this, uh, I don't, I believe it's on the first page. And the details, but it explains that we would go into a relationship, we would sign a contract going into a relationship with them for four years. Uh, this is standard practice, I've spoken to about ten municipalities within the area and talked to their treasurers and what their processes are. I compiled what all they did and kind of that's how we came up with this document, what information and what process to go by. Um, a lot of towns will sign a five-year contract, I did a four-year contract because, um, treasurer term is four years. So I thought it would make sense, we get through this. Four years we come up, it would give the new treasurer, or if I'm still the treasurer, it'd give the option to look at this and know what they're getting into a couple of months before. They would either need to extend their relationship with the bank they go with, or if they wanted to send out another proposal.
Could you tell us, uh, what bank or what, what city? Got some information.
Um, so I can tell you, I have talked to someone in Trenton, New Bay, uh, Mascuta, Glen Carvin. Collinsville, Caseyville. Off the top of my head, those are the ones I can tell you, I looked at some smaller and some bigger, I kind of took a range of the different processes.
The city clerk involved in the discussion to put this together?
The city clerk was not involved in the discussion of putting this together and shopping it out, no, not yet.
See, the city clerk is. If you read this description, city clerk or city clerk spends more time involving with the banks than almost you. And, uh, city clerk is there every day to make deposits and do all this stuff. So I think it would be important to have a city clerk involved in the discussion.
Any decision that would be made would not be done without discussing with the office personnel and those that work with the bank. But ultimately, I'm the one that's responsible for making sure that we're getting a competitive interest rate, um. I will speak to that more in private if you'd like.
And what the other item I wanted to get to you a little quickly about. Is that you have a recommendation to the council for approval, but you skipped the committee process. Which is, there would be two readings before it would be approved.
So according to the attorney, I, this does not have to have a formal vote from council at all.
It doesn't.
It does not. He said that we can go through this process and.
Oh, this process, but the selection. Cause you have the calendar and you're going to re- recommendation for pro- of a proposal for approval. While it'd be good to get the council involved earlier than the night that it's approved. Cause all too often we get something that we're asked to approve at the last minute without it going through the committee process. Really does need to go to committee first.
Yeah, so if you notice on the dates, August fourteenth or August twenty-second, I believe August eighteenth. Is actually the committee finance meeting, um. Yes, so August eighteenth is the committee finance meeting, everything has to be given to us by August thirteenth. So my intention is that we will be able to review it and be able to discuss it in that com- that committee meeting. However, if there is additional information that needs to be obtained or additional questions that need to be asked, we need to leave the date open to be able to follow up and ask questions with those banks. Through the twenty-second. But we will be able to discuss it in the eighteenth at the committee council meeting. Um, it just may not be a formalized, everything done in that time. And there's nothing that says we can't advance it to the next month, but I will tell you every day that we take to go through this process is the day we're losing interest. So that's why I've got it outlined to be as quick as possible. The interest? I would beg to differ, it's pretty substantial. There any other questions?
Uh, I just hope that we're, uh. Aren't able to get sufficient time to look at. What we're doing. Okay, it might take a little bit more time than a month.
As I said, I outlined it with the quickest timeline we can do, we can always adjust it, but ultimately, uh, the goal is to get to where we are. Getting to where we're earning the most interest we can in a day, as we keep talking about, he, he mentioned like. We have money problems, wasting it i- is not ideal, so we need to get these accounts earning interest quicker than later.
So what do we do now?
What do you mean, what do we do now?
Uh, with the excess funds, you're talking about.
So we do have some money in CDs, but that's not the money, I'm, I'm talking about our deposit accounts right now. So we do have some money in CDs and, and different investments in those.
How much do we have in, uh, regular accounts?
Um, it's gonna be about, it averages. It's in here, I want to say it was four point six, four point five is what we average, billion.
Paul wants to ask a couple of questions.
Uh, so I have a couple of comments, I wasn't part of this whole process and George made it incorrect. I actually go to the banks and deal with the banks probably ninety-five percent of the time over anybody. Uh, I've got to drive to and from the bank sometimes twice a day. So hopefully those other cities don't respond, Glenn Carvin, last, last thing you want your city clerk to do. And the liability that you guys are creating. Uh, but the, the other thing is, Jessica and I talked. The, the, the biggest thing is, is why not try and negotiate with the bank now? There's an email that was sent to Charlie and Jessica on June twenty-third with. Carvin, copy and myself and somebody at First Federal, Tiffany. They're willing to pay up to two point five percent already. So. Why not keep the relationship of being after nine years when we left regions and they left town anyway? And stay local, but the biggest thing I told Jessica, and she will confirm this, is that if by chance you guys select, I can't select banks. Okay, I understand high interest rate, I understand fraud prevention, but the one thing I asked her to do and I asked you guys to do. Is think before you ask, some of you actually bank at First Federal or bank at Farmers and Merchants, but if you leave town. If you leave town, you should leave some money in First Federal because you do not want me leaving town. I may sell both my cars, you're gonna have to buy a car. How the hell am I gonna go to Trenton, Glen Carvin? It's not mandatory that I have a car. So I would like depository, at least mentally deposits at First Federal. So I don't have to leave town because that takes me away from the desk. It's an hour turnaround time anywhere I would go at that point. But I understand where she's coming from and you guys to look at different things, but. I wasn't part of it in the last four years, I know there was a problem, I know people were here talking about it. And that email we got, and Charlie, you got it also, June twenty-third, I was called, pardon me, on it. Nobody responded, I had to call him just to ask what was up. And that's when he said, I guess I read deeper in the email, it was pretty high interest rate. And that's on point three five accounts, now they're gonna be up to like two point five. And that's not etched in stone, I'm looking at the email, that's up to them on the, the change rate, but, uh. That's all I have.
Okay, I'm gonna speak to that. First off, we're doing a disservice to First Federal by exposing an email that was sent in, in private. Um, which is what I was trying to be cautious in doing. I have had meetings with Todd, the CEO of First Federal, I have met with them a couple of times, I have also talked to them. I informed them after discussing what they sent over. That we would still be going through to have proposals sent in because we wanted to make sure. That it is competitive and then also our biggest worry is the fraud prevention, um. I had informed him that that's what we were gonna do. I did respond to his emails, that email, the last one was sent, I did not C C everybody and I did leave it open. Because I had already said to the bank that we were gonna be sending it out for proposals and that this is expecting them. As well to put forth their best foot on what they're willing to offer. And this is what I want to make very clear. I don't want to have to switch banks, it is a huge inconvenience to switch banks. We have to change our checking accounts, checks, our processes, everything. But since he said it out loud just now, they were paying point three five percent. They are now willing to jump to two point five percent after finding out that there are many other banks in the area that would do that. That is a difference of a hundred and four thousand dollars a year. In interest that we have left on the table by not shopping this out and not doing what we are doing right now. So, as I said. I know what I'm doing, I work in insurance, I am well aware of that if we have to drive out of town, the concerns with that. I work in risk management every day of my life, it is not something I want to do. Again, I am hoping that we keep our relationship with First Federal. But it is my due diligence as the city treasurer to be able to go to our residents and say. That I got them the best deal they possibly could and we are earning as much interest as we possibly can on our money and that it's safe.
What? Overnight?
I'm sorry.
What kind of rate are you getting overnight?
At First Federal, point three five percent.
When you mentioned Glen Carvin, just clarified, that was a town you talked to about how they do it.
That was a municipality that I researched to talk to about their process on what usually municipalities do to be able to make sure they stay competitive with their banking. I did not talk to the, a bank in Glen Carvin.
Thank you. You got some talk in the middle next week. Uh, water and sewer, anything? Personnel? Sorry, health and safety? Okay, moving to unfinished business, any unfinished business? I have a piece that's not on the agenda, but I'll bring it up because it is, this has been discussed in the past. Uh, this past year, the council approved, um. So putting in the budget and I realized that after the budget was set, so we gotta do due diligence on this. Put in the budget an amount to send the mayor and one other council member to the I M L conference. That's gonna be several thousand, past a couple of thousands, I knew that, but even if it's only for, for two days. Uh, you've got registration fee, mileage, hotel and meals. And, uh, the council needs to make sure we get that in next year's budget, it's not in this year's budget. Going to those conferences is very important to get the exchange of ideas with other municipalities. And to learn from the, uh, presentations, there are numerous presentations made on various topics. Such as the banking situation, such as, uh, water sewer issue, the street issue. That's the place that they get it, our city attorneys have been attending that. But nobody else from the city goes to those, and that's how we find the information out, other than reading the. Monthly magazine that doesn't get a lot, just gives a little bit. I did this as a professional educator for decades, going to regional, national conferences. And coming back to great ideas that were implemented.
When is that conference, when are these?
It's, uh, it was just announced, it was just in the email today, it's in September. It was just announced today that registration is open. And it is in September. And, uh, it's in Chicago, of course. That's why it's so expensive, the room hotel, their block of hotel rooms is two hundred and seventy-five dollars a night. And. Then there's the conference registration, which is several hundred dollars per person. So we were probably budgeting two thousand, three thousand dollars for that, send two people to it. Cause we would probably have to always be sure to have two rooms. Because we don't know about the mix is going to be, they're going rooms, and it's just better to have separate rooms.
Don't you think it would be best to send there, I mean, we affected most?
Well, the mayor for sure, and then the mayor would have to decide which area, uh. Is most needed at that time. Of course, anybody paid for their own way, most needed at the time and, uh. And then if that person doesn't wanna go, then somebody else. I think that's what, that's what it'd be. Yeah, moving on. Uh, new business. We're gonna have to discuss or recommend an ordinance amending section two dash one eighty of eleven of city code. To establish procedures for payment of bills and approval of warrants. The ordinance you received in my email, do you all have any questions as to why this has come up? I know why. But I would sit out here in the audience a number of years ago. And meetings then started at seven o'clock. And it'd be seven o'clock and then seven ten and then seven fifteen and so on. And the meeting would then get called to work and it's because there were three older persons, at that time they're called older men, older persons. Flipping through the bills and initially them. So that was changed that they're on the table and three older persons need to come in and initial the bills. And that was a, that was an accountability issue that was put in place, who knows when. It is nothing required by state law, it's purely city ordinance, it is very time-consuming. We still get a list of all the warrants, a warrant is a bill being paid. You still get a list of all the warrants by email from the city treasurer every month. And we could, actually the accountant sent it out, we could, we can see who the vendor is and the amount to the payment. Anytime you question one of those amounts, more than welcome to come to city hall and look at the warrant itself to see what was spent. And all the years, I've been on the council for six years, plus all the years I've been observing. I have yet, there have only been two times items were questioned on a warrant. And both times, it was right to question the item. But they were questioned. Now, it's a lot of time being spent on that, you know, we, we, when I was in high school. Go back sixty years, seventy years, when I was in high school, high school band director would stand up there because somebody was making noise. They would say, we just wasted three hours. Why? Because there are a hundred and eighty kids in the van. And every minute was a hundred and eighty minutes wasted, that's three hours. So when we have three older persons sitting up here for an hour and a half, two hours, just initially things. We're wasting a lot of, of personnel hours. Or something that. They're checked, are, are, uh, the, the mayor is responsible, that we have the, uh. Treasurer looking at them now, we have the accountant looking at them, there's, there are, there are checks and balances. That's why this ordinance was proposed. Do I have any questions about what's in the ordinance?
She has an email to organize.
Yeah, you received it by email. It does have the city council still voting, saying, but we don't have to, two people have to sit there initially. This is the time to discuss this, so I'm gonna go up for a vote, we're not passing it out. Okay.
Everybody's on board.
I will say that we're going to affect until next month, so the bills need signed tonight, if possible by three aldermen. If you wanna see what that's like.
So the other thing is, like I told Jessica and Charlie, we, it's gonna take us probably thirty seconds because it's only one signature on a whole page. It's already been approved by you guys anyway.
Right.
It's a summation of what we're paying and I think it's a great idea. And, uh, it's gonna save everybody a lot of time in that, because, you know, we're out here.
George, the reason this came up is because it was difficulty in getting all the person to sign our initial bill. Well, I called I M L, I spoke to the main person there, Brad Cole. And he was saying the way we did it was an exception rather than a rule. So we had to come up with something different because we couldn't get people to sign the bills, so I think now it says myself. Um, Paul and.
You yourself, Paul, and the treasurer.
Treasurer, yeah.
Right, and yeah, I'm surprised that you couldn't get anybody. Um, I'm available about ninety percent of the time and I never got a call.
There's one person, eventually they kind of refuses to sign the bills. There, and there's no, nothing says they have to sign it.
No, 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 we're not being forced to do it. I've done it many months, there are many times I've signed the bills. Yeah, when I was mayor pro temp, I signed a warrant to pay the bills. Moving on. No discussion there. Okay, the next item is one I put on the agenda, discuss possible solutions to flooding problems during every rains. And the biggest issue is money. And in our statutes, there actually is a way to find the matter. To do this, somebody still has to pay. But it is difficult to get a citywide referendum passed. For an issue that affects, that affects only a small number of residents. Really is difficult because they're saying, well, why should they be paying my taxes to do that work over there? Well, there is, and it's in the Illinois municipal handbook. And I tried to use it last year to do a project somewhere else. But uh, the attorney then wasn't really in favor of it. And uh, nobody really understood it, but it's called a special service area. When there are issues, for example, in the country park, really affects a small number of residents. And the special service area does not have a minimum size, it can be a lot larger. Uh, so that it's spread out more easily. But a service, special service area means that if there is a group of residents. Or an area of the city, a few blocks or whatever, who would like to have improvements to their area. It, it, uh, there's a lot more than process, because this is the, this is the simple silent form of it. Is you talk to all those residents in the country park area, all the residents that are affected. Plus, spread out, who else is affected secondarily. As long as it's a contiguous, contiguous area and we can come up with very defined borders. Uh, they can, if they're willing to volunteer and sign up for it, doesn't require a vote. Doesn't require the rest of the city man taking a decision for a small area of the city. They can establish a spec, we can establish. With the vote of the council. But there's some other research and paperwork that goes along with it, a special service area. And as progress lines are clearly defined along property lines. And in a special service area, once the scope of the project is understood. And there is a, uh, everybody agrees. And by the way, it's majority of those people agree. Uh, the city can establish a special service area, can then issue bonds. For twenty years, they're paid off over twenty years. You know the cost, so we issued the bonds for the cost of the project and the interest for twenty years. And only the, the, this is the bad part, and we don't like this. Somebody's gotta pay, but only the residents impacted by this will pay. But it's only with their permission that they're joining their, in the special service area. And so we can, I don't wanna discuss, you have a decision tonight, you can read about it. Uh, it is in a different handbook, it's in the municipal handbook, and I think there are one or two of these floating around up here. We have one. Everybody should, yeah, because this is the one that tells you, this is the cookbook, this gives you the recipes to get things done. And special service area, then only those people for twenty years will pay. An annual tax on their tax bill for the work that's being done. So it's spread out over twenty years and spread out over all the homeowners in that area. And if you move and sell your house, guess what? The next buyer picks it up. You have to go along, your responsibility is only as long as you uh, own the house. That's why I'm bringing this up, is this something we want to discuss, to pursue and we suggest? To the residents who are impacted like down on the flats, the Kennedy Park, so that only those residents. Are taxed, still gonna have a tax. If they go for a citywide referendum, I know it's gonna happen right away.
Very wild.
That's right.
George, I believe you were on the council years ago. When there was a plan of one, phase two, phase two and phase three. It was engineered and voted on and agreed upon the council members that were here. To move forward to solve that issue. Retention areas, drainage in the area you're talking about. Why are you gonna tax people now when you agreed to do it many years ago? When Rich Wilkin was mayor. Root Tassel engineered it and the paperwork should still be here. Why are now are you gonna tax people for something that you voted on?
For how is it gonna be painful?
Don't you remember that? Don't you remember that process? When those plans were developed?
I wasn't on the council that, but.
Yeah, this was, yeah, just like I said, what, last week or the week before? The revolving door here, nothing ever gets done.
Right.
Projects that were voted on get lost.
Okay, Terry, thank you.
Uh, you were here, if you weren't in the seat, you were in the audience, right?
Right.
Okay, did anybody bother to look for those papers? You talked to Rich Wilkin, he could probably help you.
It wouldn't matter, it's so old.
No, it's not.
Engineering and all that.
Why? There's stuff in this town that takes ten years.
Terry, please.
Takes ten to twenty years. This problem's been going on since the developer, we know who he is. He was mayor at the time and it was done illegally, developed that subdivision and created that problem.
Right.
And because the council at the time.
Terry, I don't wanna uh, debate it there.
This is, this is wrong trying to tax people for something that the city caused and yet they did. But it says they allowed it to happen.
Many years ago, long before we were here.
Okay.
So.
I seen it built.
Yeah.
It wasn't that long ago.
Well, you're, you're, you've been here a lot longer than I, it was, it was finished when I moved here, anyway. The thing is that what it does is, it is not something, the entire city. Because there was mistake, there were mistakes made back then, whether anybody's willing to admit them or not. There is no reason why, and the argument that we're not, you're not gonna refer in the past because there's no way. It's gonna happen, it's not gonna happen on our current tax income, it's gonna have to be the special tax. And so we require a lot of discussions, a lot of meetings, a lot of understanding of who it involves. And who knows, you may have a group of residents in another area who want curbs and gutters on their streets, doesn't happen. Well, they have a way of getting them, if they're willing to mortgage their property essentially for twenty years. For their nth part of it. When I say nth part, that's part, how many properties involved, if it's a hundred properties, the class is divided a hundred ways. Over twenty years. And I said, and by the way, when you, when you issue bonds, you're talking three percent interest, which is better than we pay for anything else. Because those go out for bid. And lending companies actually bid on those uh, three bonds, you know that. So, that's why I just brought that up for discussion, not trying to make any decisions. I'm looking up special service area, so now we have a potential solution. Yes?
As I get on my soapbox about every year about this. We have no capital improvement plan for the city. Everybody, almost every job that we've done, whether it be a street project, a water project, this lift station. All of those affect one area more than another. And we plan for those, you know, I plan to the water lines, I've been planning for a lift station for twenty years. I mean, we knew everything out, you know, is older here, we have to work, those are huge projects. In order to plan them, but there is no planning now for those projects. So, you know, these people have flooding, you know, if there's a plan. That they know, okay, well, we're gonna work to them, we're gonna save money for the next five years, we're not doing any other project, we're gonna put money towards that. Then we have a goal and we have somewhere to go. We used to always do that, it's not done anymore, I've been harping on that for the last, I know, five, ten years because we haven't had one. Each time the EPA comes and does our evaluation of the sewer plan, that is one of the main things they ask me every single time. And I have to write, no, we do not have one. And it is in marked in our, against us every time, not that we, I mean, they don't. Give you a violation or anything for it, but it's one of their suggestions that we have a capital improvement plan. Where I know I have a list, I know Cody has a list, I know the chief used to, I don't know if that list is still out there, but. Think that those should be brought here in a meeting, the people who have issues that are bringing these laws, that should all go back onto. A plan for the city to look forward to, hey, we still have this issue, yes, it's been here for twenty years. No, we haven't had money to do it, but we've also, we've also done other things ahead of those. Maybe some because we had grants for those and grants have to be done. For those purposes, because we can only get money, we don't wanna give up, you know, a million dollars because. You know, we're not gonna get that project done another way, I get that, but there just needs to be a plan, and we don't have one.
Yeah, because the very first thing that's asked on most grant application is, is this project part of a plan? And that gives you extra points, Terry, you've had your chance, and that gives you extra points. That gives you extra points, so we've had a plan for the historic district. We have, we've tried a couple of times to get some of the funds, we're looking at, we're piecing it out. We've had plan, we had a plan, we spent eighteen thousand dollars on for the southeast quadrant. And that's sitting on a shelf. So there are all kinds of plans out there. Terry, ten minutes.
There is nothing on the table.
Terry, two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes.
Okay, you told me I had my time.
You did.
Council members, I thought only got ten minutes, you've been talking for a lot longer than ten minutes, so. And then I only get two. How can you tell the citizens of this town and the business owners? That you can't do a project that was voted on? Not very long ago to do, and now you're saying no? And there was money spent on engineering and that's why your, the city's broke. Every year they spend money on engineering and find out, oh, we can't do it, we don't have the money. Engineer gets to keep his money. And architects? And then you're gonna raise our taxes?
Terry, I won't disagree with you on that.
Then why don't you just stick with the plan that was put on the table?
Perhaps that plan is in the same scope.
I don't know what changed on it, I believe I have some records in my office that might show that scope. It's wrong, George, to just keep taxing us to death.
No.
That's what you said today.
That, that's.
They're gonna raise our, their taxes if they do it.
If they want it, we're not, it's gonna be the decision of the. It is the decision of only those landowners.
To the people in the flats.
I didn't come up here to hear y'all argue. I don't wanna. Y'all need to get on a different path, because I don't wanna hear.
Yeah, I'll leave it in thirty seconds.
This is on there for discussion, is there anything else for uh, business tonight?
Can I give a very quick update on Hunter Street?
Sure.
I told everybody I would do that tonight. So everyone knows, uh, we have pump there the fifteenth, the seventeenth, the nineteenth, the twenty first. I was out there at two o'clock this morning with my crew pumping. Not that, some of those we may have been able to not do, but we're trying to be extra cautious for people in that area. The water from that station is going into a bypass that was put in for the new station. The new station is not operational, but we can use that bypass as long as our pump will force pass that. I've not left it because I don't want them, you know, to be worried about it, so we're staying there with it the entire time. Uh, we have not had to do that in the past, but I'm just uncomfortable now because of. The issue that they had to, and the amounts of rain, we've had just, this morning, we had two inches of rain and, you know, snower, it's just crazy amounts of rain. Not in a ten block, okay, that being said. I had uh, Jim Russell stopped by the other day, who is the head of air. Stop by, I talked with him about where they are in the project. Uh, still, Cameron is still an issue, I talked to him about doing the uh, cleanup. Some of the cleanup, you know, they had told us before it would be fall, that. It's kind of the same thing that he's saying now, however, I said, you know, look, we've got all this mess, we're at a standstill. He said that he would send some out if it dries up. We have a week of ninety-five degree weather here, it should dry up. Uh, they also have to raise the manhole, that's something that they can be doing, talk to them about that as well. The manhole in Summerfield, that keeps washing and causing uh. Must have had to take rock up there, so it still has to come to the surface, they're aware of that also. Did they give me exact dates? No, but I made them, you know, very much aware that we want them there sooner than later. Uh, obviously, we don't want them to come dress it up and then say we're not coming back because this wasn't on our time, our timeframe. But he did say that he, soon as it dried some, he would send somebody there to dress it up, not only the road. Or the yard there along, but also the area by the lift station, which is uh, it's really a mess as well. So um, I don't think if there's anything else. All of those have been reported to EPA. Just talked to Joe Saitle again today about him, he's our contact, Collinsville. Uh, every one of those, I call them within twenty-four hours and I make a report within five days that goes to EPA, because they've all been done. They're perfectly aware, we, I was in Trenton Saturday after I pumped here and Trenton was flooded as well. And it's not, not that we're the only people it's happening to, but if you're the one that's being affected, it's, it's a big deal. And we get that as well, you know, I'm sure that myself and my crew don't wanna spend our entire weekends out pumping either, but we do. Because we don't want people to get watered. So I just, that's as much as I can give you.
Can I ask you something?
Thank you.
Can I ask her something about that, real quick, won't take long at all?
Better not, because we're at. Unless you need the whole group to hear about it.
Hey, Jordan, I got something real quick.
Sure.
Let's say, uh, Adam Miller from the fire department called today, he's going to know if it could fall rain, they might wanna put the lights out on the road. So I checked with our city insurance and the insurance certificate to us showing that that can be covered. So if you find, you go out that way, you see about three blocks walked off, the public lives will be out there anyway, unless you want to do a small one, they'll be there.
They have also parked, they've also parked cars by the water tower, or that is not gonna be possible this year either. So, because we're gonna put some barricades up something there just to block that off, because it's. Not good.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering about that vision, usually we have to prove, pulling down the street. It's a mayoral decision.
Yeah.
On Ursula at the end of my street, they never did paint the striders, the walking striders on there in Canada.
Same thing as where.
Coming up, it might be something to do, traffic's gonna be diverted down.
Okay, is there any other business? And the meeting is adjourned, then we're at exactly one hour from starting.